Okay, so what you have in front of you on the screen is my recommended budget. And I want to cover a couple of preliminary things before we get into the numbers. Will come as no surprise to anybody that we have some very extraordinary challenges this year. So we have a pandemic. And obviously, that has affected some segments of our economy, especially locally. We've seen a handful of restaurants go out of business. We have had quite some struggles with other with local retailers. There have been some some help from the federal government. There may be more, but one of the challenges we face is that some segments of our town are hurting. And at the same time, others are not. And that is going to make our budget challenge particularly difficult. Because even though some folks are hurting, others are expecting the same service level, if not more. And we're seeing workload go up. Our town has grown seven percent since the 2010 census, which is remarkable in a state that is said to be losing. Losing population. Western side of the state has been doing pretty well overall, but Bethel really stands out as. I think it's the single fastest growing small town under under thirty thousand in the state of Connecticut for the last ten years. And that has put a lot of a lot of workload demands on our people. And I think I went through the same presentation last year, but our health department is still just just cranking full time. Laura Vassil literally has worked seven days a week since March first of last year. And that is not an exaggeration. Of course, COVID has added to that demand, and that has really put a lot more workload on her. But that is, that's a fact that all of our departments back there, land use, health, public works, and building department are really struggling to stay up with the workload. Our IT department, you're going to see that we're asking for a little bit of help there. We're asking for some part time help. That department was revamped ten years ago in two thousand, actually eleven years ago, two thousand and ten, when we when we terminated the outside contractor and hired Nick Cataldo. And that department's workload has grown and grown, and the demands on it. Not only with just general communication with all the things that have to happen with the with communication standards that our residents demand, but also the threat of cybersecurity problems has ramped up in recent years. And we've seen a number of towns in Connecticut get hit with anywhere from half a million to two million dollar theft by by not having good cybersecurity controls in place. Our police department is also seeing a continuous increase in workload and calls for service. They asked for two officers last year. I think the Board of Boards of Selectment and Finance granted one. They are coming back and they would like to have another officer. They they said that they would hold off for the first half of the year to minimize the budget, but they are asking for that help. And their overtime budget shows how much of a need there is there. There's also an increased demand for road construction. You'll remember from the presentations that our departments did. The highway department is asking for one point one million dollars. And when you look at what we have with the Rockwell and Johnson renovation debt with one point seven million and new debt coming on, you can see that those things combined are past the breaking point. So when we get to highway, you'll see a solution that I put together for that. And last but not least, we also see demand increased demand in social services and senior center departments, especially related to COVID. And our senior center staff has done a great job of reaching out to people. Megan Allwirth Kazadian, I know you had a great deal of appreciation for her presentation. But even though some people are hurting and they might have lost income, the demands for service don't stop. So we have to continue to do our job and we still have to support the residents. And the good news is that Bethel is fiscally extremely healthy. Bethel is is our current unemployment rate, at least at the end of December, was six point six. That's down two points from its peak of eight point six. And hopefully, it's continuing to go in the right direction. And to the point I made a minute ago about how it's such a mixed bag. Some people suffering and other people doing well. Retail sales in the third quarter, in the fourth calendar quarter rebounded so strongly in state Connecticut that the projected deficit of five hundred million dollars was actually wiped out. And the state is expecting to, I think they're good, expecting to end the year with something like a forty or fifty million dollar surplus that they want to put in the rainy day fund, which is remarkable for that turnaround. Obviously, that is due very much in part, very much to the federal stimulus. And there's more stimulus on the way. But the other thing we're seeing is that retail real estate sales in our area are continuing to set new records. The inventory is very low. We've seen a tremendous influx of people buying existing homes in Bethel. They're fleeing the city. They've discovered that they don't really need to live in New York City to work in New York City. They could work from their living room. And that is really pushed up the real estate market in our town. I just recently learned of a neighbor who sold above the asking price by five digits. I mean, it was an incredible amount of bidding going on for this this individual's home. Our tax collection rate, knock on wood, it still remains very strong. As of last week, when I spoke with Mrs. Kako, it still is above ninety nine percent. And some economists are actually predicting now, and this is not universal. I'm not going to try to snow anybody here. Some some economists are saying, well, we have to be careful. They could, the worst could be yet to come. But others are beginning to say that the second half of the calendar year could actually see a very strong rebound. And just to show you a couple of the recent headlines, just from the last couple of weeks. Walmart is planning to raise wages. Survey from the Harris Organization expects wages to jump in the second half of the of this year. And then from from two charitable trust, their their recent study says that personal incomes could continue to rise in the second half of the of the year. So it it's it's not an easy. It's not like when we had the big economic crash in two thousand and eight where tax collection rates fell precipitously and everybody was suffering. It's it's a real mixed bag, and it makes our job very difficult to know what to do. So here's a snapshot of the of the town side of the budget. Now, I'm going to tell you, I deliberately removed the debt load from this. I'm going to add that back in later, but I wanted you to see. We we my my goal in presenting this budget is to do basically what Dr. Carver did. Nothing new with just to maintain the status quo. That does include the part timer for for IT, and it does include a half of a headcount for the police officer. And it does include one sanitarian position for the health department, which is desperately needed. But you can see that when when you factor the departments and we saw the presentation, some departments went up, some what stayed the same, and some went down. When you balance all that out, the the town side increases four hundred, I'll just round it up to four hundred and eight thousand. And that, and when you see, when you break that down of that four hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eight thousand, three forty four, almost three forty five is wages. And that and that includes those ones that I just mentioned. With the balancing that had gone on, the miscellaneous figure that adds up to the four hundred and eight thousand includes police training, the police car, and some other things, some other contracts that are going to be going up in the next year. Here's one that I really wanted to talk about for a minute. The Board of Selectment and Board of Finance, together for years, have tried to get our road account up to a sustainable level. Just to give you just a briefest recap on history. For several years, in the in the early part of the decade, previous decade, that is, we were borrowing about two million dollars a year to get the roads caught up. It was like an accelerated road construction plan to take care of roads that hadn't been addressed properly for many years and try to get us on an even sustainable footing where year after year, we we just have a static budget that rolls forward. Then we know what that static budget needs to be. It needs to be about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But in the last two years, any attempts to make that have been made to try to pull us off the the cycle of borrowing to do roads and to put a big enough road account in the budget that we can handle that year after year with no big changes, no big increases have not would not succeeded in doing that because of budgetary pressures. When when Bob and Brad and I and the department heads went through this, we tried to. My my first recommendation was to take the one point one, almost one point two million dollar number down to nine hundred thousand. We looked at the bottom line. We said, that's just not going to work. We brought it back to seven hundred thousand, and it's still very, very difficult. So this, what you see here is a capitulation. We're gonna, my recommendation is that we stick with five hundred thousand, which is flat from the previous year. That gives us a big shortfall, but this year we have LoSiP funds available to us. If you're not familiar with it, LoSiP stands for the for Local Capital Improvement Program. Ordinarily, it's, these are, these are funds that you would like to use for something special, something that the voters and the taxpayers would appreciate, like improving your park system or improving a public building. You know, something that is a little bit more visible and kind of a feel good for people. In this particular case, I'm going to recommend that we dedicate six hundred and sixty four thousand so we can do those roads, because we are falling behind in the road construction because of the cuts in the last two years. And we need to get them caught up. The roads that you see on this list, a couple of them should have been done, you know, one or two or three years ago. So this is the list that Bob Dibble put together for us to get us back to back to square one. And over the next couple of years, I would ask my colleagues that we we still have to try, even if we only move that number up a hundred thousand a year after we get past the big debt increases from the school renovations. We we still need to keep a long term goal of moving that account up to a sustainable level. Also, as a reminder, as we've talked many times, and I want to thank Dr. Carver and her administrative team for really stressing this with with all the folks in the school community. Out of that twenty six million plus that you see in the town side of the budget, there's seven million dollars that are directly related to schools. And these are the prorated costs that that will appear in the town side of the budget. This does include the debt load, because, you know, when voters vote, that's that's going to be in that ballot. And that this represents seven point one million represents a four hundred and fourteen thousand, almost four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase from the prior year. Some of the things you see on here, I didn't put comparisons, but they've actually gone down a little bit. Workers' compensation insurance insurance went down. Some pensions went up a tiny bit. Utilities are down a little bit from where they were due to some some energy savings from the solar farm and from some other improvements that we've made, like the the Amoresco energy thing from a few years ago does does pay off. But this you'll see a very slight increase in accounting and auditing, because the outside auditors always factor in inflation in their pricing, and they all do it. So there's kind of no way around it. But this is what you see in the our the school share of the cost of the town budget. So this is what the summary looks like with the with what I've I've talked about so far. The town side with a four hundred and eight thousand dollar increase is a one point five four percent increase from the prior year. I did not recommend any changes to schools. I think Dr. Carver's presentation showed very clearly the need to handle in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of a growing population of kids who need extra help. Because of the pandemic, I don't think they could have done any better. School maintenance, again, these are just, these are pretty much contracts that are in place to keep the schools, keeping our investment in schools in line. And then, of course, the big one, which I put in red, is eight hundred and forty six thousand almost in in new debt. Now, the school debt is one point seven million, but thanks to the work that our our Board of Finance has done for the past few years, aggressively paying off old short term notes and refinancing older debt, they did mitigate that like by almost half, a little bit more than half. So good job by the Board of Finance for that and their the direction they're taking. But still, you can see that, you know, this this is a tough nut to swallow. It's what we voted for, and people should expect it. Doesn't mean they'll like it or vote for it, but this is the reality of the the budget that we have. So we haven't talked about revenue. I'm not going to talk about revenue yet. I'm not prepared to do that. We're still looking at things, but so the the total increase, including that debt, is three point four three percent. That's not going to be, if it passed in this form, that's not going to be the number of the tax increase, obviously, because there has been substantial growth in the grand list again. So but this is, this is the the main budget number. So that's the summary. And now I'm from now, from this point, I'm going to start going through budgets by department. I thought I would pause here first and ask Rich and Paul if you have any questions or comments about what we've covered, what I've covered so far.
Yeah, Matt, the only thing I want to go back to is the road account, okay? Reducing it down to five hundred thousand, and you said LoSiP will pick up that difference?
Correct.
Is that, is that, is that, sorry, is that guaranteed?
Yes. That that's, you know, in the state of Connecticut, most things are difficult. But that's actually one grant that's very easy to apply for. There's a list of things that are eligible. Phyllis checked it, you know, we've done this before. We use LoSiP funds to demolish the old town hall to make room for the library expansion and a couple of other things. And basically, all we have to have is a resolution voted on by the Board of Selectment, and we can apply for it, and then we get reimbursed.
Okay. And and the other thing that I fully endorse, it's what Laura's department just massively understaffed their, you know, are we just that that department, we're just upgrading, going from part time to full time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so basically, it's just a, it's no change in headcount. It's just a change in going from part time to full time.
Yeah.
Now, but you know, I hate to ask this question, it was, given what she's been working, is that enough?
Well, you know.
I know it's a bad question to ask, but I'll ask it anyways.
In my opinion, probably not. It's going to, and and actually, we you'll see when we get to it, we only, we only put the budget in for half a year because sanitarians are extremely hard to 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 hire. So we're anticipating it's going to take several months of looking for somebody. But when you look at the the number of things that the state of Connecticut used to do, that they don't do anymore, like restaurants.
Right, right. I know, she's just assumed more responsibilities because the state has just relinquished those responsibilities.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, like I said, I was concerned. You know, I've been concerned about that department for a long time. And knowing what what she has to endure, I'm glad we're moving in that direction.
Okay, great. Now, Rich, did you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I I agree with Paul and, you know, listening to Laura's presentation, that department has always been not fully staffed. So, you know, this was great if we can get her more help to do that. But I have a quick question on the school. With the vaccine and everything coming out, is is, does Dr. Carver think there's could be a reduction in some of the COVID requirements?
That's a great question, Rich. So I think it's a it's a complicated answer. And I'm going to start by saying that the vaccines are obviously good news for everybody. And as we start to see the rollout, they're they're anticipating, and I was on a call. This is probably a better question for Laura, but I was on a call this week, and they said that that looking at all adults that want a vaccine in the state of Connecticut sometime by May or early June. The problem that we're currently experiencing with with specifically with COVID is that there is no vaccine for children that they have approved. And so they're in clinical trials right now with some of them. But they don't anticipate that children will even start to be vaccinated until probably next fall. So it's very likely that we're going to have to continue with some of the mitigation strategies that we currently have into at least, they're saying, the first half of the school year. I'm hoping that like that it can make a significant change as we get our teachers vaccinated and our school staff vaccinated, which we're, the governor's committed to do by the end of March, at least with round to round one. And or the first dose, I should say. And so what they're looking for is that, even so, even if the teachers are fully vaccinated, there's going to be, we're likely going to see continued impact. I'm hoping that we don't have to offer all the learning models that we have, you know, that that where kids are learning at home and at school. I'm hoping that we're back to a full in person model. But I definitely think that what we're looking at is definitely going to be going into the fall of next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any any other questions for Richard Paul?
Yeah, I want to ask Dr. Carver a question here. You're absolutely correct about this. I sort of keep up with being this medical industry as I was. There is no vaccine for children yet. The the trials are ongoing because adjusting dosages and all that, we just don't know worse than that. But is there, are there any savings because we're going through? You know, if we make the assumption that maybe we'll be on a part time basis, is there any savings in this budget? By perhaps gasoline heating or anything like that? Because we, it's going to be on a part time basis, maybe perhaps for the first three, four, or five months.
Oh, I mean, I'll have Terry jump in on this, too. I'll answer it first, but I'll have her jump in. I think that the answer is that we're trying, and we have been trying all school year to offer full in person learning. So we've always had models where we've had kids and staff there pretty much every day, with the exception of a couple of weeks, we did remote when when the COVID cases were really spiking after the holidays. But other than that, our schools have, we're, we're one of the few, I think, in the state that I can that can consistently say that we've offered full in person learning. And that's our goal, and that's going to be the continued goal. Even now, we're working on a plan to bring more high school students back. The high school is the only place right now where we have where we have hybrid. So I guess in terms of utilities, which is, I think, what you're asking, we are going to be maintaining that even throughout the remainder of the school and into next school year. Because here's the truth of the matter. What they're finding across the state, state and the country is that they think kids are actually safer in school because we are implementing the mitigation strategy, it's like the wearing of masks, the social distancing, all those pieces. And so I don't anticipate that that's going to change going into next year. But Terry, did you want to add?
Well, the school buildings have been up and running.
Yeah.
So even on a hybrid basis, you're still running the buildings every day. You just have half the children in at any given point in time. And the second thing is, you know, most of our utilities, you know, we had shown it in our presentation, and and Matt showed it this evening. So that's actually handled on the town side. So and and Matt mentioned that utilities were a little bit budgeted at a little bit lower. And that could be part of why, but that's budgeted on the town side on behalf of the schools. And I think they did factor a little bit in for that. But our buildings have been have been occupied, just not fully occupied. So they have been up and running every school day, except for, as Dr. Carver said, maybe two weeks where we were complete remote because the numbers had had gotten, had spiked after the holidays.
And and I would say that I do know that through the projects, and I know that they've been out at least once to do an assessment. Obviously, they're going to add solar to the both Johnson and Rockwell schools. And that's in that's in the works, but that for so for long term, that that will be certainly helpful. And I know that, and I think it got delayed a little bit because of because of COVID and everything that was going on. But I know that they're also looking at doing, I think they were out a few weeks ago doing an assessment on the on the Track and Field Center to, as you know, was actually designed to add solar to that. So I just need to follow up. And I don't know if Terry, if you have any update on that, but that's something that we're pursuing, too.
I know that they have recently been back out. Bill Craddy had gotten in touch with Bob Germanero. He was sending some folks out from a company to look again at all the roofing and everything. So it's not part of the building project, the renovation project, but it is part of your Energy Commission that you have in town, that that Bill Craddy is very, you know, the chair of that. So that's where that fact that would come in.
Let me just ask one more silly question. Since we pay for the gas or diesel on the buses, in the, since we're not using them as much, or if we haven't used them as much, is there any rebate coming back from the transportation company on this, or they just charging charges full ball?
Well, before you enter this, before Terry enters, I want to say we're using the buses every day. They're doing, they're doing all of the runs.
Okay, so there's been no reduction?
No, I mean, with the exception of those two weeks. But other than that, they're they're running all the time. And Terry, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, you remember last year at the end of the year. So we purchase our diesel fuel directly. We don't pay for student for the diesel fuel. And last year, because we were closed from the middle of March till the end of the year, we had contracted for more more fuel than we were going to be able to utilize. And and our vendor there let us carry over those prices as well as the the gallons that were remaining. So this year, we've been using that up, and then we'll start actually using a new, a smaller contract that I entered. But really, the save, most of the savings fill out because of fill out in our remainder of money last year because we weren't running the buses for about three months. But this year, we are running the buses.
Even we're we're back, athletics are back up, so some of our after school programs, so all of that's picked up again.
Okay, that's the last of my questions.
No problem, that's why we're here. Rich, did you have any other questions?
I'm good.
So Rich and Paul, let me ask you a question. Normally, what we do is spin through every department in order of department number and vote individually as number. Do you want to run through all the departments first and then go back and vote, or should we just do it the traditional way?
I I think, you know, let me just chime in here. I I went through the comparisons between what was presented to the Board of Finance and Board of Selectment. Pretty much, you know, there's just a few departments that there are changes. You know, we can go just go department by department. Matt, you can just say, no, no, no increase, no decrease.
Okay. Yeah, I I think we should do it the traditional each department to be consistent.
Sounds good. Well, then, let's start with one hundred, the Selectmen's Office. So what I'll do is I'll I'll make these in the form of a motion. And once the motion is seconded, if there's any adjustments, then we'll do that as a as a motion to amend. So now, I I'm going to be sharing the screen, so I won't be able to show open gov. I don't know if you guys need open gov open, or should we just go? Because I've got my recommendations on the PowerPoint. I can do it either way.
Wait, why don't you leave the what you have up on the screen like right now? And if there's any questions on the individual apartment, maybe Bob couldn't, or Brad can bring up the the other material.
All right.
Agreed.
Okay, so starting with Selectment, I'll put a motion on the floor that we fund Department one hundred in the amount of two hundred and ninety nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars.
Second.
Okay, the second, let me, before we vote, let me just remind everybody. This actually was quite comical last year. I I start, after we had our budget presentations last year and we voted, I started getting lots of emails from people saying, congratulations on your raise. So I just want the public who's watching to know, this is not the first selectman salary or the selectman's stipend. This reflects that there are five people who report into the First Selectmen's Office. This is Craig, the, and then Mary Churchill, the Benefits Coordinator, Janice Christianeck, the EDC Director. And this reflects last year's cost of living increase. There's nothing programmed, there are no raises programmed in here. This just reflects what what they got a year ago and just adjusts the numbers. So I just want people to know that, know that taxpayers don't give me a raise every year. So nor am I asking for one. So we have a motion. Uh, so, uh, nor am I asking for one. So we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries. Moving on to department 110, there's no change. I'll make a motion that we fund this. As requested in the amount of $5,500. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Department 120, finance. Uh, there are some salary changes here. This reflects that the cost of the increase that classified from a year ago plus some. Uh, union employees who will, their bargaining agreement has increases next year in the upcoming year. Uh, so I'll make a motion that we, uh, fund this department as requested in the amount of $478,619.
Second.
Okay, second by Paul and Rich. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Department 130, town clerk. This is a slight decrease from the prior year, if you remember Lisa's presentation. And I'll make a motion that we, uh, hold on a second. I see I have to admit people when they come in, so I'll take care of that. So this is a decrease of, uh, $1,977. I'll make a motion that we fund in the amount of. $235,580 as requested.
Second.
Second by Rich. Those in favor?
Aye. Just a quick question before we go on here. Uh, her salary is going to be reviewed, uh, this year sometimes. I believe by charter.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
By the board of finance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Selection, selection year for the board of finance will review it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Department 140, assessor. Um, this, this reflects, uh, salary increases and we have more employees who came up in a step. So that's why that's a little bit higher than normal. So I'll make a motion that we, uh, by the way, I want to, I want to congratulate, uh, Izzy. Uh, she is now, I think, a couple of years into this job. Uh, she earned her CCMA two, level two, just before taking over. And, uh, she's done a fantastic job and I know that she has built a very strong rapport with, with our taxpayers too. Uh, so I want to just give her kudos for that. So I'm going to make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of 243,668 as requested.
Second.
I think that's wrong. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. This is another slight decrease. Um, postage is, you know, e- every year, a few more people start, uh, signing up to do online bill paying and getting their invoices online. So this is, um, this is reflective of that. Uh, and again, Anne Skeco has, has, uh, not only done a great job, she just got on, uh, finished serving. A year as president of the state's tax, tax collectors, uh, association. And we are very fortunate to have people like her and, and Lisa too, who's now president of the, uh, town clerk, the vice president of the town clerk's location. It's, it's great to have people who really know their, uh, their work and, and can be so efficient. So I'm going to make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of 211,620 as requested.
Okay.
Is that, this guy is in a first, those in favor, those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Department 160, legal services. Uh, the increase here reflects actual experience. This may bother people, but it is the world we live in. As a side note, I, I was reading, uh, uh, uh. Wasn't really a biography, but it was a history of Joan of Arc. And in one of the documents, there was a complaint about the church lawyers. And how much it cost in legal fees, which just blew my mind, you know, so many hundred years ago. But it, it is a fact of modern society. Uh, we've had some challenges and that, uh, that has raised our, our legal bills. So we're trying to make this a more realistic budget. So I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion that we fund this in the amount as requested at $264,830.
Second.
Second by, by Rich. Those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. All right, um. Number 170, probate. Uh, and then, yeah, this is a shared thing, a very, very slight increase here. That's, uh. This is probably one of the, one of the few things the state did that actually saved money, at least to save the state money. Make a motion that we fund this amount, uh, this account as requested at 5,793. And that, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Department 180, then this is a, this is a department that has some real, real challenges in terms of the workload, building inspection. Um, the, I, we, we, I think Chris Baldwin is doing a fantastic job with part-time help to keep, uh, keep his. Department, uh, afloat. He has brought in a certified inspector on a, you know, on a, like a contract basis during peak times to help out with this. So, uh, you, you know, we're, we're, we're working very hard to get the online permitting system up, which will. Make them much more efficient and take some of the pressure off the hourly work that needs to be done. But, uh, for the moment, uh, I think this is a real bargain considering the workload, uh, and the huge increase in building permits. So I'll put a motion on the floor that we fund this as requested in the amount of 280,294.
Second.
Second.
Second by Paul. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Data processing, otherwise known as information technology. Um, the very slight increase here, uh, this is a. This is, we, we're going to talk a little bit about the headcount later on. That is, uh, that's, that's really in, in the, uh. Uh, wage contingency. And I think that the number we put in there for a part-timer for a year was 30,000. Uh, but that's not reflective of this just yet. Uh, so I'm going to, this is just general operations and the one employee who's there. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we fund this in the amount of 200, 323,104.
Second.
And this seconded that, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Social services, uh, basically flat, just a very slight decrease. Decrease in office expenses, decrease in the emergency fund, um, and decrease in mileage and dues, um, for this year. So I'm going to make a motion, uh, to the department in the amount of $89,089 as requested.
Uh, Matt, do you want to point out on this one that we moved 1,250 to the wage adjustment account? This wasn't her exact request. We moved the salary increases to the wage adjustment account.
Okay, all right. That's the, that's the extra hours, right Brad?
Uh, the, the extra hours equals the $750. The increases in wage was moved to wage adjustment.
Okay.
But you're, you, but you've, uh, decreased, uh, the emergency fund by a thousand, didn't you?
Uh, she did that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, favor, three, five, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Town insurance. I can, I can tell you that, um, the work that, uh, Brad Haring is doing as our risk manager. Uh, continues to pay off. We've had a slight increase in, uh, property and liability because of the cost of the school renovations. That decreases in some other areas. So the aggressive work to, you know, keep people safe, make sure that they're working safe. It does pay off. I, I know, uh, towns in our state that are seeing 10 and 15 and 20% increases in insurance this year. So we're, that, that's not a, so I'm going to make a motion that we fund this in the amount of 1,439,000, 400. 1,439,400. And Rich seconded that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. Basically, uh, some contractual increases and, uh, the cost of vehicles that are getting older. So I'll make a motion that we fund this. I didn't recommend any changes. We fund this in the amount of 355,938.
Second.
Okay, second by.
Ju- just a quick question. Help, help me here. Uh, I noticed on the presentation, it was for a thousand dollars more. Was that just a, an addition, uh, error? Because they, they had 356,938 and, uh, you're at 355,938.
Uh, Paul, on that one, the Eric had made a couple of changes to his. So if you're going off the original printouts that Bob had given you.
Yeah, right.
Big differences.
Okay, thank you.
So Brad, this is the right number, right? 355,938?
Yes, this is what was presented.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. Public works. Um, mostly, uh, contracted, uh, labor agreements and a little bit extra in contracted services. Which is mostly building maintenance, things like the elevator, uh, contracts. And, uh, those are things we're going to have to address in the capital budget at some time in the fairly near future. People get stuck in them all the time. And I think the library has problems with their elevator too. So I'm going to, I didn't recommend any changes here. I'm going to make a motion that we fund this in the amount of 361,999.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Yeah, just, just a brief discussion, yous, um. The elevators, I, 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 I know that, that $5,000, okay, but, uh, there's no other place that we can put that right now, is there?
Oh, you mean the contract?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so, because that's.
Okay. All right. That just was, just, just was a question.
Yeah.
Cause I, I know I got stuck in the elevator there in town hall, one in the front building one time.
Well, that, that was just an increase in, in the service for those, uh, particular elevators, not.
Right.
To repair them. That's in the capital, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're going to talk about capital tomorrow night.
All right.
The, the, the $5,000 increase is really for, uh, for ramping up to do the big sidewalk grant.
All right.
That I'm told the state is going to approve this year. It's been pending for two years, but that's, I'm, I'm very excited about that, so.
All right.
$5,000, we get a couple thousand feet of new sidewalks in places that never had them, so that's.
Now, well, I've always been told a thousand here, a thousand there, it all adds up to a million.
Uh, okay, so those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. 240, highway. Uh, this is the one I, I took down the request. We, we really wanted that. I really wanted to add money to this and we need to. But, uh, in, just in, in recognition that, you know, whether all people are hurting or not, the perception is that, uh. You know, that we need to be super tight on the budget. We're, uh, I, what I'd like to do is over a couple of years, as we, as the new debt peaks and then starts to fall again. We, we keep that, those budgets combined flat and start shifting some money over to get this highway account up to where it needs to be. There's, uh, a big need to do that. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor for discussion that we fund this accounting amount of 2,138,272.
Uh, Matt, um, that number still has, um, 700,000 for roads. So it'd be 1,938,272.
Okay.
Down to 500,000.
Okay, say that again. What is it?
It'd be 1,938,272.
Okay, thanks. I didn't change that slide. Okay, so I'll amend the motion, uh, 1,938,272. Thanks Brad.
Second.
That's less than a 3.292. So I, I'm sorry, Rich, did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, any discussion on this motion?
I, I think we have to make this very clear to the Board of, uh, Finance as well as the public. That we're not ignoring the roads because of the low Sip Grant will take care of the difference. Uh, I, 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 I get a lot of calls about, you know, roads as it is from our constituents. But, uh, I think we've got to be very, very specific about this to, to, uh, our, our residents saying that. Uh, we're not cutting the road account. It's going to be covered up by a grant.
Yep, you're, you're right. Messaging is going to be very important.
Yeah.
Well, the, there is 500,000 in to begin with, correct?
Yeah, I know, but we know, we, we, we've, you know, Rich, but we, 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 you know, you and I have been sitting on this thing for many, many years of trying to raise it. Cause I remember the days when it was down to 200,000, I think at one time.
Uh, no, I, I agree, but I just, you know, in case something does happen. I, you know, unless we see the check in the mail or check in the bank, uh, we don't have it, but you know.
Yeah.
But it's still money for roadwork.
But, but, but the thinking by both, both Boards of Finance and Board of Selectmen is that we've really got to raise this. And like Matt said earlier in his presentation tonight, we're going to really have to drive it up towards 900,000. But I just want the, the, the residents to think that we're just not cutting this particular budget without thinking about what can we use in grants. Because, uh, I think that's very important, uh, that we ma- make this communication very clear, that we're very transparent about this whole thing here. Because the way it looks right now, we've cut it, you know, whereas, you know, the both Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen have always said, let's raise this account. We've been underfunding it.
Okay, no. Okay, I agree.
We have a motion on the floor. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
That carries. Transfer station.
Oh, my favorite department.
I'll make a motion that we fund this in the requested amount of 203,751.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any, any discussion?
No.
No.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That, that carries. Training and zoning. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of 260,008.
Second.
Second by Rich. Uh, we, last year we had, we did have one, uh, employee go up to the final step, so he's, uh, uh, at full pay now at 100%. And that's reflective there. Uh, any discussion on that one?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Building maintenance. Um, make a motion that we fund in the amount of 842,204. Second by Rich. Any discussion?
No.
No. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Department 270, tree warden, no change. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of 172,900.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any, any discussion? None, those in favor?
Aye.
Right, that carries. 290, emergency management. I'll make a motion that we fund the amount of 40, 42,402.
Second.
Rich seconded. Any discussion here? Nope, and.
No.
Tom Galliford is another stellar employee who is well-respected around the state in this field. So we're very lucky that he's with, uh, town of Denver too. Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Fire marshal, same guy?
Same thing. Second.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Paul seconded. The amount is 109,630. Those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Purple fire department, uh, flat fund. I'll make a motion that we fund the amount of 182,900.
Second.
Second by Paul. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And Senator Stony Hill, make a motion that we fund in the amount of 142,750 as requested.
Second.
Second by Rich. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Registars of voters. After a kind of a wild presidential year, get a little bit of a decrease in their budget. I'll make a motion that we fund in the amount of 105,465.
Second.
Second by Paul. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. 240, town boards and commissions, uh, zero change here. I'll make a motion that we fund the amount of 53,750.
Second.
Second by Rich. Those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Health department. Um, Brad is the, is the, uh, the sanitaryant in this number or is that in wage contingency?
So, um, it, the increased half of position is in this number.
Okay.
Um, so her requested number was thirty eight thousand five hundred more than the four two seven. Uh, so the four two seven does represent that being reduced to halftime.
Okay.
But i- is the other half in wage contingency, or oh, we're only figuring for the half of your figure, and it's gonna take a while to hire somebody?
No, the half, so hiring the person as of one one twenty two is in her account. That's why it's a thirteen percent increase.
Okay. Yeah, we 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 budgeted for half the year. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of month, account three five zero in the amount of four hundred twenty seven thousand six hundred eighteen.
Second.
Second by Paul, any further discussion on that?
Yeah, well, uh, just to go back to the the, so I understand it. So if um the other half of the year is not funded in wage contingency, if she was able to find somebody early on?
No, there's nothing in wage adjustments for um her hiring the person earlier than January first.
Was Laura satisfied with that, or? I mean, because we have, what, uh, four months before the New Year starts, so she could, if she wanted to, she could start looking now for someone. I I'm just throwing this out, that's, you know, for discussion.
Well, we, if she found somebody, we could go ahead and start them and come back and ask for some additional funding, or if you wanted to, you could, we could adjust this budget just to uh and advance it by like another fifty percent, just to make sure she's.
Well. Or is there, is there extra money in wage contingency that if it, if she was able to find someone, could come out of that? Bob, or?
No, there is, no, there isn't at this point.
No. What about the part-time sanitarian right now? Can't you use, since that's being, uh, the idea is in half a year, you're gonna use that, what, what's the salary for that one right now?
That, I think that person works with Danbury right now. I don't know if.
No, but we're, you're paying them something, you'd be paying them something between.
Yeah.
On July first and.
Contracted services, but uh he comes over to us, Tana Bethel, on Friday because Danbury is closed on Friday. So I don't know if he's a um one that that she would consider hiring at this point.
Oh, what what, well, okay, what I was just saying, well, that one day's salary, that could be applied.
Yeah.
But if 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 we've hired, fi- find somebody, say, in uh September.
Uh, Paul, the budget request did not include any reduction in her part-time people. So the budget request was just to add somebody full-time in addition to her part-time people?
Oh, okay, okay, you you didn't carry over the part-time.
That, that's what I thought, that she needed to keep the part-time people.
Yeah, that that's where I was thinking too.
Um. What what?
Well, if if she found somebody, then she she just needs to come back to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance for the extra money, but I I just discussion, that's all.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion that we have the requested amount. Is there any further discussion on that?
No.
Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that that carries. Police, uh, couple of, well, there's one major change here. Uh, I'm recommending that we remove one vehicle. They had asked for four, so I'm I'm just to, and I know they need them, but I'm um recommending that we remove that just to try, just for some budget softening. Uh, cuz I think they got, did they get two vehicles or three? I think I got two vehicles last year, right, Brad?
Right, we.
They got two, and they had one, one in capital non-recurring.
Right. Could we do that again this year?
I suppose. Well, there's, he's got four in the budget right now.
They had four in the budget last year, too.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm recommending to be.
I think they only ended up getting two, and then they got one later on through capital non-recurring. Is that right, Bob?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's correct. Well, I'm I'm recommending that we remove one. Now, we're gonna be looking at capital and capital non-recurring tomorrow night, tomorrow night's meeting, so uh, we can, we can revisit it at that time, too, if you want.
Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we fund Police Department uh in the amount of five million one hundred eighty six thousand six ninety nine.
Matt.
Oh, wait a minute, Brad, I bet you I didn't change that slide either from what the original one, did I?
You did. Um, the chief would probably ask me to point out that a car is more like forty thousand and not fifty. He did have other things in his capital account, so the cars were, four of them were just under a hundred and sixty thousand. He does have in his capital account another twenty four thousand of other equipment.
Yeah. So, well, I I thought that the fifty included all the retrofitting, you know, the lights and radios and everything in the car too, is, is that not correct?
I think when you add all that stuff in, it runs about forty thousand, and I don't know if he's on.
I'm just going to the page now. It's one thirty six and then fifty seven hundred, and then light bars, one thirty six divided by four is thirty four thousand, and then say six thousand with the fifty seven hundred, and then he's got two vehicle computers, I guess, we wouldn't be taking those out. So, yeah, I mean, if you took, if you took the vehicle changeover and the equipment, that's fifty seven hundred dollars per car, and it's a hundred thirty six thousand for uh the capital equipment, roughly thirty four thousand on a car, so you've got um forty thousand dollars. His numbers are thirty three nine sixty nine and fifty seven hundred. Thirty nine six sixty nine. Per car.
Um, and the chief just uh just logged on. Chief, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
How much is one, how much is one car worth fully equipped? What's the cost? Is it forty thousand?
Um, it's the first number, the, I don't have it in front of me, what's Bob has in there, the thirty three?
Thirty three nine sixty nine, yeah.
And then the fifty seven hundred equipment, so whatever those two numbers are together is the total.
And then, I I mean, you've got computer, light bars and such, but that's only the two parts.
Yeah, exactly, so some of, some of the ones we don't need to replace, but some of them we do, so you can't.
Two more, yeah.
I I mean, I don't know what you're, I I've just got on now because I heard something about a car, so I jumped on real quick. Um, so I don't know what the plan is, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Chief, the 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 recommendation I'm making is that we remove one car, but we leave the overtime increase in, we leave the uh, the uh the part, the partial unit for the police officers, the head county. So, uh, but if I have the wrong number, I can restate that motion. If the right number is forty thousand, I'll I'll withdraw the motion and restate it.
Well, well, what, Bob, how many computers do we have on there?
You got two computers, you got two computers, and you got two light bars. Computers is thirty two hundred, um, and the light bars are twenty four hundred, so that's uh fifty six hundred in addition to, but that's probably for the other car, I guess, right?
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, so, yeah, we still would need the two computers and the two light bars, so the the thirty three, whatever number it is, and the fifty seven hundred, those two numbers combined are the total for getting rid of one car.
Thirty nine six sixty nine.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Okay, so I I will just round that to forty thousand, so I'm gonna restate the motion and say, I will make a motion that we fund this department in the amount of five million one hundred ninety six thousand six ninety nine.
Second.
Okay, second by Rich. Okay.
Well, can can you repeat that number again to me, please?
Five one nine six six nine nine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on on Police Department?
Second.
Oh, okay, we've been multiple seconded, all right. No further discussion, so I'll try your minds. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that carries. Parks and Recreation, um, recommending no change to this. Um, I know that uh their services as 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 people get vaccines, this is sort of like you're funding the school, there's gonna be a huge and I will department for services for parents who need to go back to work, so uh, I am recommending that we fund this department as requested in the amount of one million five hundred forty four thousand and two hundred eighty five.
Second.
Second by Rich, any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, that carries. Employee benefits. Um, slight increase there. Um, and this is another area where we've met, we've, uh, because of some smart work by our finance staff and uh and our insurance and pension commission, uh, and and the way we've been planning for the future, there's a, this is a very decrease in some areas. So this is almost level, so I'm gonna make a motion that we fund this in the amount of six million one hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred thirty nine.
All right, second.
Second.
Second by Rich. And those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Intra-government agencies. Um, no change, this is flat. Make a motion that we fund the amount of.
Matt, Matt, this goes to the Social Service Department?
Yeah.
Oh, 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 no, no, I'm sorry.
That's, that's four ten, isn't it?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
This is, isn't this uh CCM and cost?
It is, it is, yep.
So I'll make a motion that we fund this in the amount of four hundred seventy six thousand nine hundred seventy one.
Second.
Oops. Hold on, I went backwards. Okay, four seven six nine seven one. Uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Utilities. Make a motion that we fund the amount of two million four hundred sixty nine thousand four hundred and sixty hours.
Second.
And this is another one, it is what it is.
Second.
Thank you, Rich, seconded by Rich. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Miscellaneous charges and transfers, this is where the contingency accounts hide. Uh, make a motion to refund this in the amount of eight hundred sixty one thousand three hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is the account, Matt, that we moved the money from the social services, so this is up one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the original requested.
Okay.
Where where where's that, where's that increase at?
In the wage adjustment account, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have any new contracts coming up that we have to settle, or any monies in this?
No, there, no, we get a one-year break from uh union bargaining, then it'll pick up again the following year. Okay, we have a motion to fund this as requested. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Senior Center. Uh, make a motion that we fund the amount of two hundred forty eight thousand six hundred eighty nine.
Second.
Second by Paul. Um, a- and again, the senior center staff has done a great job during COVID. They haven't been able to run many, any programs, but they're, they've been running food programs, uh, shopping for people, uh, calling, doing well, well, phone calls uh, to make sure people are are staying safe, and if they need anything, working with the Social Services Department, working with Brotherhood in Action. So I want to commend the the staff, they've done a great job. So I'm gonna make a motion that we fund this, uh, I think I already made that, two forty eight, six eighty nine. Um, any discussion on this one?
No.
Who seconded that? I I I didn't catch that.
I'll second it.
All right. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Library. Uh, they've done a great job controlling costs, and I know that uh this is another place where parents really need to rely on the library staff uh, when they, you know, just to, for enrichment for the kids, and boy, they need it after a a year of uh, you know, Zoom classes and partial classes. So I want to commend the library for the great job they do, too. So I'm gonna make a motion that we fund this this account in the amount requested, eight hundred ninety four thousand five oh three.
Second.
Second by Rich, any discussion here? Any more in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Debt service.
Well, the mortgage, no, we have, there's just no debate there.
I would, yeah, I would really like to vote this one down.
No debate. I'll I'll second it, you have no choice.
Yeah, five million seven hundred eighty one six thirty eight. And a seconded by Paul, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, reluctantly. Aye, but, you know, like, uh, I thought, Bob's always reminded us, this is what we voted for. Education. Uh, as I mentioned, um, I I believe that they are 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 pressed to the limit, given the enormous challenges of dealing with kids through this pandemic. Uh, and I I I simply don't think they could do any better than what they have here, so I'm gonna make a motion that we fund this in the amount of forty nine million four hundred fifty thousand eighty eight dollars.
Second, discussion?
Second by Paul, go ahead, floor is open.
Um, you know, I I I, I know this is sort of different, but I'm sure there's gonna be some savings this year. You know, and I I I don't know where to peg it, because I know it's, we asked Teri Yansky, and she says it's too early. But uh whatever it is, uh, I I'd like to see that somehow we reserve this for future Board of Education total budgets. Uh, I know it usually, it goes to a general fund. Uh, I I'm just concerned as we're going year by year, we keep on raising, 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 but I'd like to see someplace that we can say, hey, we we we've, we saved this money, and this is for the reduction, where we can use that as a reduction. But I I don't know how to do that legally, uh, under our form of government.
You mean like a carryover?
Yeah.
You know.
We do have that one thing that we give, they can, if they have money left over, I I think it's one percent or something, one and a half percent.
Something like that, but i- i- it's 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 a small number in comparison to that.
But they, it's it's added up, and it's helped pay for some projects that.
Yeah.
You know, uh, biggest, quickest way to start a huge argument at a CCM convention, you know, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities.
Yeah.
Got a hundred and sixty nine town CEOs in the room, stand up and and suggest that we ask the state legislature to create a carry, let us create a carryover account to do that, and then watch the fireworks. Uh, I personally, Paul, I agree with you, and I know that in many other states, they do that. Uh, where we grew up, uh, Michigan.
Yeah, both of us, right, right.
The 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 finances are fully separate, and each side is fully accountable to the voters. They even do, they even have their own bond ratings.
Right.
You don't have those intra uh intra-mural squabbles the way we do in Connecticut. I've always told legislators that whoever, whoever designed our system uh and wrote the first constitution did it for maximum conflict between the school people and the town people, which is really unfortunate, but that, but you're right. Uh, if if there was a way to carry over to save for the future, uh, to mitigate big changes like this, I think it would benefit everybody, but.
I I I I think, you know what, we should invite all of our legislators to a Board of Selectmen's meeting and discuss that, because, you know, I I think not until we put some pressure on these legislators, uh, you know, if they don't want to come here, we know that they're not supporting us, and I think we should uh have that topic uh available to them, and, you know, br- bring in uh Dr. Carver, bring in Teri Yansky, and uh, you know, this would be a perfect opportunity for those legislators to make a name for themselves.
Well, Dr. Carver is very high on the governor's list, so. We'll bring him in, too.
Matt?
Yeah.
If I could uh speak to the one percent account a a little bit, um, so it's the unexpendable funds account. Uh, it was first put in legislation, oh, I don't know, maybe eight or nine, ten years ago. Uh, it allowed Boards of Eds to carry over one percent, that's why we nickname it the one percent account. But about three years ago, um, oh, and there's no cap in the legislation. Okay, so you, Boards of Eds can put up to one percent away, and the account can grow and grow.
One percent per year.
One percent per year. So in Bethel, um. We, but it has to be, whatever you establish has to be approved by each, by your town's financial uh board, so in in the town of Bethel, it's the Board of Finance. So what we established was one percent, and that it would never, it it has a limit that can be funded up to two percent. So that's how we have it currently in Bethel, I just want to make you aware, though, that um the law changed about two or three years ago. That towns uh can allow boards to put in up to two percent every year with, without a cap. Now, of course, you want to know what boards are doing with the money, or, but it is a vehicle. That does allow for carryover, and we probably could revisit it if if the Board of Selectmen Board of Finance was ever interested in revisiting.
Well, I think it's it's a discussion that we have to have, because, you know, as long as, I guess, the three of us have been on a board of selectmen, it's always been, Board of Education budget is always a hot topic in the, in the town. Uh, and thi- this would be a a a perfect vehicle uh to say, okay, this is what we're doing. To make sure that we're having the proper education, because we're car- carrying over money that was not spent. You know, and and of course, there are some people are going to say that, well, you didn't budget it properly, well, I've been through that in industry, too, you 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 never know from year to year. Because there's always fluctuations occurring, but it's a revenue source, you know, uh being a revenue source that. The people already paid their taxes for, it's going to go back into that particular account the following year. You know, and tha- that's, that's my argument, that's the reason why I said, Matt, I think we should bring all four legislators in after the budget season. And pursue this with them uh on a, on a priority basis and say, you know, uh uh and this has to be brought up before the legislature.
And Terry, just for reference for everybody, what have we spent some of that money on?
Um, well, it's on our district dashboard uh on our website, it shows the whole history from the inception. Um, but we have, e- except for one year, we've always put more mo- more money in it than we've ever taken out of it. So the one time we really withdrew money, net withdrew money, and it was a few hundred thousand, was when uh we threw in uh the the money for. Remember, we had both the boiler and the chiller at the same time?
Yeah.
And I I think, I think we covered the chiller, and then the Board of Finance, uh the town covered the um. Boiler, so, um I mean, even if it's used for things like that, it's a way to um. Put it back in in a way that you're not, you know, you're not just showing up with surprises for the town. Um, so I thought that worked very well, but um in all the other years, we did. Put in even a little bit more than what we might have taken out, but net net, the one big expenditure was for that.
I I just wanted to get it out that, you know, you spent it on boilers, I mean, you didn't necessarily spend it on salaries or.
Oh, no, no, because under our current agreement, it can't be used for operations, but but even if it can be used just for things like capital.
Equipment.
I mean, overall, it's, at the end of the day, it's one pot of dollars in the town of Ethel, and so. Um, i- i- if it's not coming from one pocket, it's coming from the other, but it's all the same pot, so, um.
Terry.
I I understand that, I I wanted you to explain it out to other people, so that.
Okay.
Terry, the way the law's written, just 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 so I know, I don't actually know the answer to this, and I can look it up. It, does it, I I thought the law was written that, can it be used for operational expenses?
You know, I I don't want to say that uh one way or the other right now, uh Christine, I would also have to look back at it, because I haven't looked at, back at it in a while. The way we crafted it in Bethel was under parameters that the Board of Finance had given us, so, um. But we could revisit that, I mean, that may be the existing vehicle, but again, all three boards have to be comfortable with.
Right, but I I agree, Paul, I, just to throw my two cents in, I do think we need to relook at that agreement, because the law has changed since the agreement was originally written. And um, you know, even if we can get our legislatures in uh in for that discussion, which I would support, um we would just, we we we'd want to, um, we could always relook at the agreement itself, too. I think Matt's right, though, I mean, you're talking, you've got to get a hundred and sixty nine towns to agree, and that's a very difficult thing. So, um, uh, just.
My my argument is that uh that was tax money dedicated to that specific uh account.
Absolutely.
Needless to say, you know, I've always says there's three things that uh makes a budget pass in this town, fir- first thing is, are you going to mess around with my kid's education? Secondly, are you going to pave my road, and third is, are you going to raise raise my taxes? Uh those those three fundamentals uh basically ma- make a budget uh in the in the town here. Uh as far as, you know, what's the bottom line or the the common denominator. Uh, but, you know, i- i- it's it's something that's, that I've been thinking about, and I says, you know, maybe, maybe some something will start, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out.
Oh, I I I agree with you a hundred percent, uh and I, at the last CCM convention a year and a half ago, I actually made that motion as part of our legislative lobbying effort. Boy, it was a spirited discussion. There, you know, a lot of people, and agreed with you, but then there are others who, there are other town leaders on the municipal side. Who really don't want to do that, they want to control the the Board of Ed budget, which is not how our state is set up. Uh, and and it's almost like we're half pregnant. Uh, you either put it all under one roof or put it under two roofs and let them work, you know, and I I think we're like stuck somewhere in the middle.
Okay, let's go on.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to fund as requested, forty nine million four fifty oh eighty eight, uh and Paul seconded that.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll try your minds, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries, thank you very much. And finally, we have uh four sixty account, uh very modest increase here, I'll make a motion, this actually brings us back to what it should have been last year, so I'll make a motion that we fund. In the amount of four hundred fifty thousand as requested.
Second.
Second by, second by Rich, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So to finalize the uh the town operating budget, now Brad, I think I should make a change here, this is going to be, because of the police car, it's going to be twenty seven million. Uh eighty two thousand four ten, is that correct?
Uh, I'd have, let me tell you, hold on a second. The total town should be. Uh. Twenty seven million three ten nine ten.
Oh, three ten nine ten.
So Matt, I have up on, uh, I can share my screen that shows what all the totals are after tonight. Adjustments you made.
All right.
Um, if Dion, if you can make it so I can share my screen, it might make it easier to go through this.
I'll stop sharing, and that way uh Dion can, you can, you can put your numbers up, Brad.
Brad, you should be a co-host.
All right, still saying no.
Oh, it is, okay, give me just one second, oh.
There we go.
Okay.
Now, so it was, sorry, I had originally read the the requested, so it is twenty six, eight, three, two, four, ten.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll make a motion that we fund then the total town operating budget, this will be two motions, one is the town operating budget, then the second one will be the combination of town. Uh, all all that stuff put together. Uh, so I make a motion that we fund the town operating budget in the amount of twenty six million eight hundred thirty two thousand four hundred and ten. Second, second by Paul, any further discussion?
Uh Matt, we just repeat that one more time, please.
Twenty six, eight, three, two, four, one, zero.
Thank you.
Br- Brad, would you sign, uh send us tomorrow to all of us to the the other selectmen, this page?
Uh, yeah, we could send that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further, uh, any further discussion?
I'm sorry, did Rich second that?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Been hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. That motion carries, so that's the town operating number that will go to the Board of Finance, uh I think one week from tonight. Uh, now Brad, uh Marty, uh do we have to vote tonight on the the ballot number that has all three items on it?
No, it's kind, you got to wait until the Board of Finance does their thing.
Okay, so basically, we're done for tonight then, correct? Yep.
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, I I do, okay, so.
Matt?
Yeah.
Uh, you said we're going to meet tomorrow night, now?
Correct.
What, what, what time?
Uh Dion, did we say six thirty?
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
Seven.
Seven o'clock, um and I did invite the uh department heads who have uh capital needs listed in their uh in their sheet, so. And I did send you that sheet, too, and if you need a printout of that, uh we can have that ready for you first thing in the morning.
Yes, send it out now.
Okay, well, thank you. That. Um, so, uh I want to thank everybody for tuning in tonight to the uh Hollywood Squares Budget Show, hope you enjoyed. Just for your hard work, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moves and see you tomorrow night at seven o'clock.
Just to let everybody know, Open Gov had uh, all these changes that were made tonight are live in Open Gov.
Right.
Yeah, but Brad, I prefer you send it to me, I I don't like Open Gov.
I will send you the sheet that I had shared, Paul, tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll we'll do that.
Hey, Paul, Paul, the last sheet in the schedule I sent today has that, but it doesn't have the Board of Selectmen numbers yet.
No, I I I prefer you send it to me, I don't have it for some odd reason.
Yeah.
Page thirty eight.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn, uh and thank you, Brad, for your work on that, thank you, Bob, really appreciate it, Terry. Uh, your your financial expertise is always appreciated, so uh those in favor of adjournings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right. Thank you very much, everyone, thank you, Dion, see everybody tomorrow.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, good night.
Good night.